Just come work for three or four days straight.
Yeah.
Twenty-four hours a day and then four days off, five days off. You don't have to live here, just come work 48 hours in two days.
Did you see McCall was on the table?
All right, everybody, it looks like.
Just kidding, you're on top of it.
I'm not complaining. All right, everybody, it looks like we will have a quorum. We were just waiting to see, make sure we had enough commissioners. Couple items before we start the meeting, for anybody that's online or on the phone, there are a couple applications that are going to be continued to next month. And then if anybody's on the phone regarding the Maverick application, that application has been withdrawn. The other applications are the store at Vila Road and the property off Simmons Street. Those are continued to potentially next month's meeting. We'll address those here in a little bit. Okay, with that, Ryan, we'll take roll call.
All right, Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Newman is absent. Commissioner Kinser.
Here.
Commissioner Rock.
Here.
Commissioner Moss is absent. Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Brown is absent. We have a quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum. We'll go and have, first item will be review and approval of the minutes. Believe, do we have all three? I thought one of them was crossed off.
We only have August 10th and September 6th. I did not complete August 2nd, but then when I was going back through all of your motions and everything, you actually had approved June and July already. So in my audit, these are the ones that I have ready for you today.
The August 10th and September 6th. Right, everybody's had a chance to review those minutes. Is there any questions, corrections, changes? If not, I'll be open for a motion.
I move to approve the August 10th and September 6th minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, and it's been approved. We do not have any preliminary development plans for this meeting, so we'll go to the consent agenda. If there's any items that you want, hold on, commissioners, if there's any items on the consent agenda that you want to pull off and discuss individually, let us know. Otherwise, I'm open for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, motion is carried. Now, I want to make sure we get to the right ones here. Move on to, make sure we got this. Okay, so on old business. The first item is the Maverick, and they have requested that their application be withdrawn or totally...
They have withdrawn their application, yes.
So do we need, we need to make a motion to remove this item from the agenda?
I move to remove CUP 2201, DR 2201, and SR 2201 from the agenda.
All right, we have a motion, a second to remove. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion's approved. It'll be removed from the agenda. The next item, the applicant has asked this to be continued to the next meeting. Do we need to move it specifically to that meeting or wait to hear from them?
To November first meeting.
Okay, we'll take a motion for move that item to the November first meeting.
All right, I move to move PUD 2204, CUP 2204, DR 2206, and SR 2204 to our November first meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move this being, or move this item to our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carried. That'll be continued on to the next meeting. Moving right along to new business. Design Review 2215, Shoreline 2204, 489 Cammie Drive. Do we have Don or are you going to be presenting with us, or is Michael?
Oh, Don, I'm Don.
Okay, Don, yeah, if you'd like to come up and give your name and address.
I'm Don Cardwell. 633 Fox Bridge Lane, McCall, Idaho. Okay, so it's all, it's nice to finally be here. Because we've been, we've been dealing with this for a couple of years to get this application here to this point. And I really don't have anything to add to what the staff has recommended for approval. They listed some conditions that we're obviously happy to meet. I guess I'm just here for any questions we may have.
Okay, I don't think we have anything at this point. We'll probably have, commissioners, do you have any questions before we have staff report? Okay, I guess we don't have any questions for now. We'll let staff do the report. If we have any, we'll come back to you on that.
So do you need me for...
Nope, not, not right now, I think.
Oh, that's just...
All right, Ryan?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. This application is for single-family residents at 489 Cammie Road. This is a portion of Rio Vista subdivision that never got connected to Central District Service. They're taking a unique approach to this by proposing to go under Cammie Drive and connect to a central septic system of a shared, or a shared septic system across, across the street from them. They have, they said, worked their way through, moved Central District Health approvals on all of that already. But, so yeah, other than that, it's a pretty standard shoreline application. They need to modify their building placement a little bit to accommodate setback from the area of special flood hazard rather than the watermark as shown on the plans. Other than that, pretty straightforward. Pretty typical, new, modern architectural style, wood and stonework, single-digit roof generally. Yeah, no further questions.
Was it addressed to alleviate the 30%? Is that the snow? It's not the snow, but down to 26%?
Viewing it closely, the, I don't believe they actually hit that 30% total at any point within the building footprint. That was a concern early on, but I think, yeah, reviewing it real closely, if you measure at any two points on the building, they're always, it always adds up.
Okay, so that's not an issue. Commissioners?
May I say something? So with that in mind, when we adjust for the setback, we should still be within that percentage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioners, any questions before we go to Morgan?
You have highlighted on here, snow storage not identified.
Correct. I believe there's adequate snow storage on site, just not spaced, so you just... It's there.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like it's here on the bottom left corner, kind of near the driveway, maybe?
There it is.
Okay. Morgan?
Great. So I've worked with the applicants a little bit since my initial engineering review. They have submitted a stormwater drainage report, and that's been approved. The only really remaining item for me is the license agreement to cross the road. I think we were just waiting for Central District Health's approval and maybe to see the easement across the road where the drain field might be. But we're still working on that across the road.
My understanding on that was that the city was not going to enter into an agreement until we were approved.
Yep.
I'm just clarifying.
So there's still a little bit.
Yeah.
Staff's got that. Is that under a condition of approval that we have that?
That's what I was looking for.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I think number three, it looks like. Yep. All right, any questions for Morgan? All right, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody online or on the phone would like to comment regarding this application? You may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. But again, anybody online or on the phone that would like to comment on this application? Anybody here? Have you already commented? I'm guessing not. Okay. All right, not hearing any comments. We will close the public hearing. Commissioners discussion.
I don't have any comments.
Yeah, I mean, they seem to have addressed everything. I think the biggest thing is the sewer, or lack of sewer, but they've got easement lined up. Central District Health's approval to share a drain field on the other side. That's one of the biggest issues in that area. As long as it fits setbacks and everything else, it seems pretty cut and dry.
Does to me.
There's Tom. Many thoughts, concerns, questions?
Not for me.
Okay. Are you open for a motion?
I move to approve DR 2215 and SH 2204 with the conditions of approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, any second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has been approved, or motion approved, application approved. Thank you very much. It's a nice looking house. All right, we'll move, move to the next item. Design Review 2222 and Scenic Route 2214 for 2079 Warren Wagon. Dennis Geis, are you... Or Kevin Wade? He might be muted. Do you need to hit star six to unmute yourself? Are you with us, either Dennis or Kevin? If you hear me, we're not hearing you. We're seeing somebody unmute themselves and then they get muted again, so we can try star six.
You did it again, Dennis. Star six one more time.
Yeah.
We got you.
Is he there, Dennis? I heard you for just a second. Well, while he's doing that, we'll go to the next item that's also going to be continued. Subdivision 2206, CUP 2206. Design Review 2223, Scenic Route 2215 at 209 to 217 Simmons Street. That's going to be continued to the next meeting, so we can take a motion to have that continued to our next November, or to the next meeting in November?
I move to move SUB 2206, CUP 2206, Design Review 2223, and SR 2215 to our November first meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the, this being moved to the next meeting, to continue. All in favor?
Hello, this is Dennis Geis.
Be right with you, Dennis. All opposed? Motion is carried. It'll be moved to the next agenda. All right, Dennis, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, great. We can hear you now.
Okay, technical difficulties. My name is Dennis Geis, 11771 West Florida Drive, Boise, Idaho, 83709. I'm representing Kevin Wade to do new construction of a 600-square-foot garage with 160-foot shed roof at 207 Warren Wagon Road. Did you get on that?
Yes. Did you want to say anything else, or would you like us to move to our staff report?
I think we can move to the staff's, 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 staff's.
Okay. Staff report?
All right, thank you, guys. This is for a garage on the Seagrout on Warren Wagon Road. Please report application. Approval or really to include, and a bit more landscaping identified along the front of it. There's quite a few existing trees already, but they didn't show it. It appears that there is an updated thing in my packet that I'm seeing.
That's the same, I'm sorry.
But, yeah.
Commissioners, any questions for Brian? Seems pretty basic. Morgan?
My only comment for this application is just to provide a narrative or details on the site plan about temporary erosion control measures that'll be implemented in construction. That was my only comment for this one.
All right. All right, commissioners, any questions for Morgan? All right, well, this is a public hearing. We opened the public hearing for this one. Anybody online or on the phone that would like to comment regarding this application? Again, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself if you wish to comment. Anybody here wish to comment that's here at the meeting? Again, online or on the phone, star six, give you another second or two? All right, here are no comments. We will close the public hearing. Commissioners, discussion, any questions or concerns?
Not for me. It seems pretty straightforward. I guess, do we need to add that to the conditions of approval, Morgan, that temporary erosion control measures?
If there's not already...
I think you got something that says we need final engineering approval.
Oh, it's in there, okay.
We gotta get final engineering approval.
Got it.
Should include all that.
Well, then, there we go.
Yeah, I have no comments on this one.
Yeah, seems pretty, pretty straightforward. Are you open for a motion for anybody?
I'll move to approve DR 2222 and SR 2214.
Second?
2079 Warren Wagon.
All right, we have a motion, any second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion has been approved, has been also approved. All right. We've already continued the next item on the agenda, so we'll move to the variance 2201, 300 Cron Lane. We have Leslie and Terry Roberts.
Good afternoon. Leslie Roberts, 215 North 3rd Street, McCall, Idaho. And we had a pre-application meeting, I think it was, here two, three months ago, whatever it's been. And so, anyway, just, we submitted a report along with that. I think it was pretty detailed, at least as far as we were thinking. In light of the over the last two, three years, everything going on in the road, I'd like to see us get the variance approved and we can move on. Thank you for your time.
All right, uh, staff report?
Thank you. As, as stated, this, uh, received twenty, uh, for a residential use. So, um, since then, uh, these building permit has, or his design review has expired, the one year with came away without him applying for a building permit or asking for an extension of time. We've also updated our code a little bit, uh, to change our definition of building height to be based on the more restrictive of either existing grade or conditional elevation. On that new definition, his building is too tall to be permitted without a conditional use permit. Additionally, it does not include at least fifty percent of the ground floor as local housing. There's no plaza or uh, pedestrian amenity to alleviate from the apartment to be within ten feet of the front property line on commercial zones. Other things I don't remember. There's no pathway easement or proposed construction of a pathway along the front of it, which is shown in the McCall area pathways plan. And the living area is an excess of thirty-five hundred square feet, and there is no arctic stamp. Generally, we only grant variances, and this is supported in our code, uh, situations where it is topographically impossible to develop it to a certain level, um, under the strict enforcement of city code. This is not one of those cases. The site is generally level and dry and fairly easy to develop, um, relative to a lot of properties in McCall. And yeah, it's tough, but it's the rules and, uh, for recommending denial. Standing by.
So the items you just identified, trying to remember, were those, are those all new? I know the the height thing, or what was new from the original?
The building height was the only item I changed or noticed that is now non-conforming due to code amendments. Uh, the other items, I think, just got missed in the original review.
Okay. So we didn't know all that before.
What is the height of the building under the new definition?
Forty-one. Over to which the building height in the commercial zone is fifty feet, but it requires a conditional use to exceed thirty-five.
Yeah. And then the residential housing, what was that portion? I missed that.
So that in commercial zones, either fifty percent of the ground floor area has to be a commercial or public use, or an equivalent square footage has to be dedicated to need restricted local housing.
Gotcha.
Have in there the rest, that's just because it's community commercial zone for the pretty much all the other items, except for the architectural stamp one.
Yeah.
Now, the architectural stamp one, basically done after that as well, right?
No, that requirement has been in place for several years.
But prior to the original?
Yeah. We had a clarification at the last meeting whether garage space was included, but that's been included since before this application.
And all the restrictions because of the commercial zoning that are in place, they, they stay in place even when you're asking for residential?
Yeah, we, uh, generally want commercial to be in commercial zones.
Yeah.
Um, so we hold them to the same standards.
Okay.
There's nothing stopping somebody from building as a residential unit and then selling it to a commercial property, so we want to.
Yep. Wanted to stay that way.
Right. Might be able to be reused as commercial.
Morgan, do you have more to add on that one, or just?
We do not have anything.
Commissioners, any other questions for Brian before we open the public hearing? Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, so we will open it, public hearing now. Uh, anybody online or on the phone that would like to comment regarding this application? Again, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. And we do not have anybody here in the meeting hall. So one last call, anybody online or on the phone that wish to comment on this application? All right, hearing done, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, discussion.
I can start, I guess. Yeah, I mean, I generally find that it's a little, it's a little difficult. I think staff rattled off a number of areas where we're not really in compliance with this, and it's kind of hard to grant the variance on that many items. Seems a bit like slippery slope to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my take as well. It would, it seems to confer a special privilege to this particular applicant as opposed to, you know, enforcing the, the rules across evenly.
Yeah, I mean, I could see maybe if it was the height thing, because that was changed since then, but there's quite a bit more. With commercial space, the housing, the setbacks, pathway, the square footage, it just seems to be with that many things should potentially come back with a new application with the CUP and the other items to be able to be addressed. Wasn't a commercial zone, but we set a precedence in the commercial zoning, not having something that was addressed, it could be an issue down the road.
That's, that's how I feel.
Tom, your thoughts? I think you're muted, Tom.
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, I, I agree with that. It seems like there's a mechanism through CUP and there's, you know, creating a variance here. It seems like a new application's probably, it's probably the right approach here.
Commissioners seem to be online, so it's just a motion to deny the variance? As we have anything recommend, or a motion to recommend, because it is in the county? Gotcha. Thank you.
I move to recommend denial of variance twenty-two zero one.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to recommend a denial to the variance. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion is carried, and fortunately the variance is denied. All right, um, signs?
Um, best part of mine, I don't know if I actually managed to document this afternoon or not. You spoiled it, huh?
No.
Oh, yes, okay. Well, officially it doesn't count, but, um, St. Luke's Strip wants to put a bigger than normally permitted business hours that we operate, we set a script up over the door to make it clear when you should and should not ditch stuff in their parking lot, for the most part. Um, so we reviewed that, and then I also got the signage for the rest of the building entitled with that. I guess they've never bothered. Um, and then I have applications in currently for the new RE/MAX over at one zero two and North Third. And, um, a massage joint in town, also on the Third Street, and those two, pintalk, et cetera. And then my fun experiment for the winter, you may have noticed that the form of the taco sign has changed. So I have granted them some flex- flexible experimentation throughout the winter, instead of like laying curb, building that landscape gutter area to retrain their customers using that outside filling station stall to drive a little bit more tightly in a certain area, um, and then see how their plowing goes. Since a sign wouldn't be proportional enough to require a sidewalk and getting driveway entitlement, they want to see and test the space for how to get drivers to maybe pull tighter in to that filling station and figure out the best possible place for a sign. But they're actively pursuing solutions, so I said, we can get creative and weird. This is fine. And I think that they're training people, okay? Haven't seen the sign itself like knocked over. So that's positive.
I've hit that sign before.
When it was a sandwich board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
My kids just think it's hilarious.
No, it was like down low and I didn't see it.
They think it's funny.
All right. Well, that concludes our items on the agenda. Take a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You're ready, we are adjourned.
You might.